This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-6 at Sec Notice, which has been sent to the record and the Star-Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board. Councilwoman Monreunenborg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent. Councilman Pataglia?
Here.
And Mayor LaBrass. Here. I seem to have misplaced my docket.
Now you can use mine. I said she didn't have any.
Okay. So we have a few things tonight, but before we start, I want to...
Flag salute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, everybody rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just let's send some prayers out to Deputy Mayor Sims, who had surgery today. We won't go into detail, but let's wish him a speedy recovery. And I also, we lost some people this last week who were very important to the city of Hackensack. Recently, within the last week and a half, we lost Mr. Mike Marionello, longtime Hackensack resident. At one time, I was a CFO for the city of Hackensack. Grew up in the first ward. Was part of the Tros Club for years. Very active in sports in Hackensack. Actually, the M&amp;M Building, one of the M's is Mike Marionello's family. Also, this past week, we lost Colleen Whitaker, young woman, 38-years-old, was the daughter of Parker School Principal, Lillian Whitaker. So she is in our prayers. We also lost Al DeRosa, who was a Hackensack, baseball of Hackensack trustee and past league president. And then we lost, just the end of this past week, Kazimir Wisaki, who served as the mayor of Hackensack from November 13th of 1962 to May 25th of '65. And then again, from May 27th of '69 to May 27th of '73. And from February 2nd, '77 to May 24th of 1977. So close to seven years he served as mayor of the city of Hackensack. He died at the ripe old age of 99-years-old. God bless him. And I'd like to, let's have a moment of silence for these folks. Oh, Hal Bloom. Thank you for reminding me. I knew I was missing somebody. Hal Bloom, a beloved principal from the high school for years and years at Hackensack High School, passed away a little over a week ago. And let's have a moment of silence. Thank you.
My neighbor Brian lost their girlfriend, 48-year-old lady. She got complications in 48 hours. And they two days away from the Hackensack High School. Nice guy, that wife.
All right. We're not approving any minutes tonight? Okay, so we're going to go right to the city manager's report.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council of our guests. This is the city manager's report for January 29th, 2019. Hackensack Day at FDU is Thursday, January 31st at 5:00 p.m. at the Rothman Center. Tickets are free. This is also posted on our website. Two, National Wear Red Day is February 1st. We are encouraging our employees to participate in the recognition of Heart Health, H-PAC Event, Heart Healthy Go Red Event is on February 1st from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Three, Open Swim will be starting up again on February 6th. Please refer to our website to view the flyers and the events that are scheduled. Four, We Love You Foundation New Book Drive will continue until February 1st. Please bring only new books and place them in the box located in the City Hall Lobby. That's downstairs by the bookcase. These books will go to children at the Sensary Children's Hospital. Five, H-PAC, the Pack the House Event coming up February 2nd is at 8:00 p.m. Amy Helm will be performing. Be sure to check out hpac.org for more information. Our building department update, 76 written notices, 126 inspections were made, 11 summonses were issued, 10 CCOs were done, 22 Oprah requests were fulfilled. Seven, snow ordinance. This is a reminder to our residents that we are approaching these winter months that have snow ordinances in effect. Reminders via Nixels will be sent. And that would complete the city manager's report for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I did forget, we do have proclamations to read tonight. I'm going to read both of them. And the first one I'm going to read pertains to the city of Hackensack Health Department. And it reads, whereas the city of Hackensack Health Department celebrates the extraordinary progress in women's heart health and recognizes that more needs to be done to safeguard women's health for generations to come, and whereas heart disease is among the leading causes of death among women, some of the risk factors for heart disease are smoking, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, overweight, obesity, metabolic syndrome, and diabetes. And whereas women can take action to protect their heart health and prevent heart disease by taking steps to prevent and control the risk factors for the disease. And whereas keeping women healthy to protect their heart health and to prevent heart disease by taking steps to prevent and control the risk factors for the disease. And whereas keeping women healthy and promoting awareness of women's health issues, including heart disease, is an important responsibility and depends on the actions of many organizations and groups in the community. And whereas women's health remains a priority for families, communities, and government, and our commitment to by keeping women healthy is stronger than ever. And whereas the Heart Truth Program and its red dress symbol are building awareness of women's heart disease risk and empowering them to reduce their risk and prevent heart disease. Therefore, Hackensack, New Jersey, women need to take action to make heart health a priority for themselves and their families, become aware of their risk for heart disease, and take action to their heart health. Now therefore, I, John P. LeBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the council, do hereby recognize February 1st, 2019, as National Wear Red Day, and encourage all citizens to work together to promote and improve the health of women and increase awareness and understanding of women and heart disease. So this Friday, everybody, break out that red sweater, the red jacket, the red shirt, whatever, red scarfs, let's dress up in red this Friday in honor of women's heart health. And this one, I was invited to go over to, we have a place in town called Comprehensive Behavioral Health, used to be over on Ward, where one of the projects is now going up. They've moved to 25 East Salem. But I was invited over to see some of the things they do over there. I was quite impressed. They do tremendous amount of work with the community, all different aspects of healthcare, psychiatric healthcare, and addictions, and issues like that. And they've been doing a great job for a long time. But the man who's been running it for quite a long time, his name is Peter Skirbo, and he's retiring after 49 years of service in this organization, which is a long time, it's a lifetime of work. So whereas Peter Skirbo was hired as the first full-time employee of Comprehensive Behavioral Healthcare Incorporated, formerly called South Bergen Mental Health Center in 1970, at the direction of Father Edward Hadrick at Sacred Heart Church in Lynnhurst, New Jersey, who recognized the need to provide behavioral, mental, and addiction treatment services. And whereas in '72, Peter began serving for several years as a psychiatric social worker, treating individuals with behavioral and mental illness, as well as substance abuse problems. Whereas Peter Skirbo was at one point the longest-tenured executive director at any mental health organization in New Jersey state history. And whereas Peter Skirbo's leadership has helped raise Comprehensive Behavioral Healthcare Incorporated into one of the largest mental health care assistance agencies in the state of New Jersey, and that serves hundreds of consumers every single day and 4,000 annually in treatment programs in three counties. Whereas Comprehensive Behavioral Healthcare Incorporated provides vital services to individuals of all ages experiencing homelessness, individuals transitioning from living in psychiatric hospitals to independent living, people requiring long-term mental health care and counseling, and more other at-risk populations with respect and dignity, regardless of race, gender, sexual orientation, disability, illness, or age. And whereas on January 31st, 2019, after 49 years of dedicated service to the consumers, served by Comprehensive Behavioral Healthcare Incorporated, Peter Skirbo will retire. Now therefore, I, John P. LeBrus Jr., mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the Hackensack Council, do hereby commend Peter Skirbo on a long and fruitful career of service to individuals in need, and wish him and his family continued success and happiness. So kudos to him. That's 49 years in that business. It takes a certain type of person to be able to endure 49 years by doing the right thing. So kudos to him. So with that, I guess we're going to start business. Resolution 37-19.
Final adoption of ordinance number 502018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 94 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, gardeners, landscapers, horticulturists, and those engaged in commercial snow removal business to further regulate landscapers within the city of Hackensack.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just need to note that this ordinance, based upon a recommendation by Deputy Mayor Canastrino, and upon further review, has been amended. So we would need a motion to adopt the amendments to the ordinance. If that's approved, then you would cast a vote on the final ordinance.
Okay.
I will note, as I said in the COW session, that I do not believe these amendments are of such a substantive nature that it requires re-advertising. I think these are more technical in nature, and so it should not preclude you from casting a final vote on the ordinance tonight.
So you want a motion to amend?
Yes, I would, someone make a motion to amend, to accept the amended version of the ordinance, accept the amendments, and then if that's approved, then a vote on the final ordinance as amended.
All right, so I need a motion to accept the amended version of the ordinance, please.
I think we need to take it off the table first, though.
Yeah, I mean, I guess a motion to take off the table.
Okay, motion to take it off the table.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to accept the amended version of the ordinance?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we need public comment?
Yes, absolutely. Now that we have amended the ordinance, I think it would be appropriate to open for public comment.
Okay, I need to, please, anybody, I need to motion over to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on the landscaping ordinance, please come forward. Seeing no one from the ordinance, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the ordinance as it was amended?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of...
We have an abstention.
...Hackensack, the county of Bergen, and the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 502018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay. Resolution 38-19.
This one, you need a motion to remove from the table.
Need a motion to remove it from the table?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we already had a public hearing on January 8th, so now we just need a...
So I need a motion to adopt.
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 602018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 39-19.
Final adoption of ordinance number 2, 2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to permit certain residents of Essex Street to obtain resident parking permits.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody who would like to speak on Resolution 39-19, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adopt.
Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 2, 2019, has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 40-19.
Final adoption of ordinance number 3, 2019, an ordinance to amend and update Chapter 108 of the Code of the City of Hackensack entitled Limousine Services.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on ordinance 40-19, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 3, 2019, has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 41-19.
Final adoption of ordinance number 4, 2019, an ordinance to amend the salary for Class III Special Law Enforcement Officers within the city of Hackensack.
Motion to open to the public, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on Resolution 41-19, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 4, 2019, has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 42-19.
Final adoption of ordinance number 5, 2019, an ordinance adding Chapter 3B to the Code of the City of Hackensack to establish a stigma-free advisory board.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Actually, need a motion to open to the public. Sorry. Motion to open to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on 42-19, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and the state of New Jersey, that ordinance number 5, 2019, has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 43-19.
Introduction of ordinance number 6, 2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to add a new handicapped parking space in Section 49.2, Parking for the Handicapped.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 6, 2019, as introduced, does now pass on its first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on February 12th, 2019, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 44-19.
Introduction of ordinance number 7, 2019, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, parking to remove obsolete provisions governing parking on Anderson Street.
Need a motion to introduce, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 7, 2019, as introduced, does now pass on its first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on February 12th, 2019, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. That was 44-19. Resolution 45-19.
Introduction of ordinance number 8, 2019, an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 93 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, garbage, rubbish, and roofie, to establish regulations governing roll-off containers/dumpsters and prohibiting others stored on city streets and property.
Need a motion to introduce, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 8, 2019, as introduced, does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on February 12th, 2019, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 46-19.
Resolution of the city council of the city of Hackensack, authorizing the settlement of litigation entitled Parham versus Hackensack Superior Court of New Jersey, Bergen County, docket number B E R L 152717.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Resolution 47-19.
Resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel an outstanding balance on property located at 355 Main Street to clear the balance from the records.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Resolution 48-19.
Resolution authorizing the settlement of the litigation entitled Aruki Reevee versus City of Hackensack Claim Petition 2017-11052 pending in the New Jersey Division of Workmen's Commission.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 49-19.
Resolution authorizing tax refunds for state board judgment.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 50-19.
Resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated January 29th, 2019, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Resolution 51-19.
Resolution authorizing transfer of 2018 budget appropriations.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Resolution 52-19.
Resolution authorizing dedication by rider Hackensack Municipal Open Space Trust Fund.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Resolution 53-19.
Resolution authorizing the award of co-op purchasing contract for the purchase of an Elgin Pelican Series P Street Sweeper.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 54-19, the payment of bills.
Resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Does anybody have a conflict on the consent agenda? See anything?
Following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any items requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and the consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. The consent agenda consists of Resolution 55 through Resolution 71. Resolution authorizing participation of the city of Hackensack in inter-local agreement for mutual aid plan and rapid deployment force within Bergen County. Resolution 56, resolution of the city of Hackensack authorizing the issuance of a limited brewery license to Hackensack Brewing located at 78 Johnson Avenue. Resolution 57, resolution approving towing companies for the years 2019, 2020, and 21. Resolution 58, resolution authorizing an extension of leave of absence for Lou's Elena Alvarez Keyboard and Park II, commencing on February 13th, 2019, and ending March 15th, 2019. Resolution 59 is a resolution authorizing execution of agreement with Otterstat Agency for Risk Management Services. Resolution 60, resolution authorizing an amendment to the shared service agreement between the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen to provide certain animal control services. Resolution 61, resolution authorizing renewal of Bergen risk as third-party administrator for the city's workforce compensation, general and automobile liability insurance. Resolution 62, resolution authorizing a person-to-person liquor license transfer of Lido Restaurant to Lido Pizzeria and Restaurant. Resolution number 63, resolution authorizing the acceptance of State of New Jersey 2019 Safe and Secure Communities Grant. Resolution 64, authorizing the release of escrow funds for 226 Busake Street. Resolution 65, authorizing the award of contract to suburban engineering for Brasse's Creek Pump Station Assessment. Resolution 66 is authorizing the award of contract to suburban engineering for stormwater assessment of various pumping stations. Resolution number 67, authorizing the award of contract to suburban engineering for LSRP Engineering Services for the DPW Yard. Resolution 68 is authorizing the award of contract to suburban engineering for waste characterization and evaluation of the Johnson Park Former Pistol Range. Resolution 69, authorizing the award of contract to Robertson Engineering for construction management of the Main Street Streetscape North Project Phase 1 and 2. Resolution 70 is a resolution authorizing the appointment of Monica Villa Fanna as qualified purchasing agent. And Resolution 71 is a resolution authorizing a raffle license for Holy Trinity Church.
Very good. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was just read, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. With that, I need a motion to open to the public?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward. Give your name and address to the clerk. You will have three minutes. Thank you. Coming up, Rich.
Wait a minute. It's impossible.
You don't even have to wait tonight.
Hey, there's not many people here, so we're expecting a lot from you tonight.
Wow. Well, does that mean I get 30 minutes instead of three minutes?
No.
No? Okay. Yeah. All right. I'm Rich, Skirbo, 46 Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack, New Jersey. Okay, I just want to comment on Ted's remark when he entered the room earlier, and I want to answer it by saying, yeah, youth is wasted on the young. George Bernard Shaw said that, of course. And yeah, Ted, I echo your comment that, give us some of that youth back, some of us that are getting old. So I wanted to comment on that for Ted. And also, a couple other things. I think Comprehensive has done a wonderful job, and they are a mainstay now in Hackensack. They moved to a different...
25 Salem.
Yeah, they're at a different location now. And, but they've done a wonderful job. They're there, and it's very affordable. So I'd just like to mention that. There's a sliding scale for people that can't afford counseling in some way, and it's a good organization, institution, or whatever you want to call it. And so congratulations to Mr. Skirbo. It's a similar name, no S on mine, and so, but we hope he has a wonderful retirement. So thanks. And I just want to comment on last week, a week ago, we had an election, and I just want to start by, you know, saying that there is a great importance on education. We live to learn, and we learn to live. So it's very, very important that we pay close attention to education. But bravo to the mayor for standing tall and showing leadership, which, you know, I've questioned in the past, but I'm so glad that you showed some leadership and rallied the troops against a spending bill that I think was problematic. I do. I do think that education over the years has increased so much that it has created a problem for the city and for taxpayers, of course. And so, good job, Mr. Mayor, and the voters turned out, and great job. So, but let's make sure you avoid criticism by reworking that the way you said you might by talking it through and, you know, giving to education, of course. And so we'll see what that comes to be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, that was a joint effort of the whole city, not just the mayor, that's for sure.
No, okay, I understand that. But we'll give you the credit.
Thank you so much. Thank you. But it was a joint effort. That's all I'm going to talk about on the Board of Ed issue. Anybody else in the public?
Good evening. Jeff Bellano, 73 Johnson Avenue, Hackensack, obviously. Mayor, thanks again for informing us on this ridiculous spending bill.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you reaching out to us. I also didn't believe it was well thought out. But at this point, Ms. Cai, Board of Education, has reached out to you guys on social media on having a joint meeting with the council and the Board of Education, basically just to show a bit of unity, hopefully, and to basically inform the public where we're at right now with education. Me, at this point, I'm going to be a forever Hackensack resident, hopefully. And hopefully, I'll have kids here. And I just want to see where our education's going, hopefully for my children to go through. And hopefully, you guys could make that joint meeting happening. One group not above the other. Hopefully, it's a neutral ground, and hopefully, just the public can get more informed, and hopefully, you get younger minds more involved in politics here. That's all, I yield my time.
Good. Just so you know, there was a meeting between, already took place on Friday. Go ahead.
Are you finished with your questions? We don't want to take any of your time. Okay. The City and the Board of Education has regular scheduled monthly meetings where we have two council members, Councilman Ron Roomberg, Stephanie, and myself represent the council at these. And our city manager is usually residing. He was out sick, so his assistant stood in for him at this last meeting, just this past Friday. Superintendent of Schools attends. This time, her assistant also attended, and a couple of the board members, in this case it was president and vice president. So we had, you know, our regular scheduled monthly meeting, and we discussed a lot of these issues, and we also talked about the joint meeting. It's something that we're going to look forward to in the future. We want to give the Board of Ed, it wants to have the opportunity to get back and collect some data that they need. And we're going to continue to meet, and when we have something meaningful that we can present together, you know, absolutely, we're going to look forward, and I'm going to, you know, of course, acknowledge the rest of the council on this because they're involved, and look forward to doing that joint meeting. But I think, Steph, right, we had a good meeting? I think, you know, it was an open dialogue, and I think we have to regroup, because I agree with you, our children are our future, and it's very, very important. And I think getting together and coming up with a plan that makes sense and a plan that is, has a financial or fiscal responsibility to our residents is critical. And I'm very optimistic that we're going to see that in a not-too-distant future, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else from the public? To say hi to our librarian, Tara. How are you?
I'm well. How are you guys?
I'm good. Good to see you. Thanks for stopping by. It's an early night for us tonight, but I need a motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And we'll start with Stephanie.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. Just to follow up on the discussion about the Board of Ed, we're really hopeful that things are going to go in the right direction. It was a very good meeting we had Friday. And, you know, like I said it before, I have three young children, and all three will be in the school system next year. And I think the parents, the voters spoke about their concerns with the different, not just the taxes, but also the structure of the education and how the different grades are going to be. So I think all those things, now that they're out in the open and, you know, people are discussing them and there's open dialogue, it's going to go in a great direction. So again, you'll be hearing from both the council and the Board of Ed, and we'll look for the public's input and, you know, how we could work together and have a continuous dialogue. I just want to thank Mr. Bill White. He recently announced his retirement from baseball at Hackensack. He's stepping down, and he did a great job. I don't know how many years has he been of baseball?
Decades.
Wow.
Long time.
My kid, yeah, too. My boys have played underneath him, and he's just, he's a wonderful guy. He gives his all to Hackensack baseball. We do have two new people stepping up, the president, Jerry Reed, and vice president, Michael Oates. They're going to do a great job. They're going to continue moving the program in a great direction. Registration's already open. If you go to hackensackbaseball.com, you can register online, or you can come here to the Recreation Department. But again, they're always looking for great coaches and volunteers to help out, so anyone out there that wants to be involved, they always appreciate it, the kids appreciate it. But again, we thank Bill for his hard work and dedication throughout the years. Nellie K. Parker Tricky Tray, Friday, the 8th, February 8th, at 6:00 PM. It'll be held at Parker School. It's a good time, you know, it's a great way to raise money for the school, and it's always a good time there. Thank you to our police department for always helping out, especially during drop-off and pickup times around the school. They've been doing a phenomenal job. The traffic has been a lot more manageable, and the safety has gotten better for the students and, you know, everyone around, so thank you so much for that. The next few days, it's going to be very cold, so just a reminder to everyone, you know, small pets and the elderly and, you know, the homeless population, if you see something that you think is a concern, definitely let us know. Is there a number to call, Ted, or?
They can, the City of Hackensack follows the Bergen County...
Code blue.
Code blue. So if there's any issues, but obviously, any concerns or issues, you can certainly bring them to the Hackensack Police Department or City Hall, depending on the hour of the day, and we will either make the appropriate, take the appropriate action, or make the appropriate referrals.
Thank you, Ted. And the mayor mentioned it earlier, but we lost Ms. Whitaker's daughter. Martin Luther King died. I didn't know the daughter personally, she worked at the school, but Ms. Whitaker, the principal of our parker, she is a wonderful, wonderful woman. The kids just adore her, and she does everything for the kids in that school, so just keep her in your prayers. Colleen, the woman that passed away, had a daughter, that's in the middle school here, too, so it's going to be a tough time for her. So just if you could keep the family in your prayers. Just a wonderful family. But that's it for me. Have a good night. Thank you for coming out.
Thanks, Dave. Steph. As you know, I represent the city at the meetings at Teterboro Airport, looking at our proposals for having that flight path moved to alleviate some of the issues that we have here in town. And the quarterly meeting was last week, so again, I attended for the city. Unfortunately, the FAA was supposed to be there to give us a formal update on where they were, where their progress was. They're in the middle of doing the technical review, the environmental technical review, but they were not in attendance, and they claimed that this was due to the government shutdown, so we did not have the opportunity to see them. The next meeting I have with them is, again, because their quarterly won't be till April, so I just asked the airport representatives that if they heard anything in between now and April, that, you know, our residents are waiting anxiously for this to come to be, to let us know. So if I hear anything in the interim, I'll let you know. The only good news that came out of this is that apparently, they've hired a consultant to do this technical review, so at least he kept working during the shutdown. So it wasn't like, you know, they stopped working on this environmental testing. So right now, according to them, their published date is still August of 2019, which is what we've been pushing for and working towards, so I'm hoping that they can still make that happen. As soon as I know things, I'll let you know. Noise complaints for the year from Hackensack. We filed 126 noise complaints over the last year, and they were filed by 64 different individuals. We're kind of, where are we, 1, 2, 3? We're kind of fifth, if you look at the chart, we're kind of fifth on the list as far as filing the number of complaints. Again, if you see something or hear something, say something, it's important to pick up that phone or send an email, because the visibility here, again, only supports our problems here, that we're, they're flying too low, they're flying too loud, they're flying hours during the night that are disturbing folks' sleep. I know, because I hear those complaints, but they have to be filed with Teterboro Airport folks to really make it visible to the FAA as well. Interesting fact, we looked at these numbers, and Rutherford is always on top, okay? Rutherford always files the most at all of our meetings. And Rutherford filed 726 complaints...
Wow.
...for the year. Way to hear this. Everyone almost was bowled over, because guess what? Maywood filed 1,018 complaints over last year as far as noise. So when they drill down to look at the problem, and this is interesting, apparently, there's an application out there now that you can purchase that's called Air Noise, right? And if you purchase this for your phone, all you have to do is press a button any time that you hear someone flying low or loud. Apparently, there's one person in Maywood who purchased Air Noise. And I said, I hope that person wasn't sitting on the button that they were pushing. But apparently, that was the key contributor to having them hit over 1,000 complaints for noise.
Do we know what it cost?
I have no idea what it costs. I just know it's called Air Noise, if anyone's interested.
Five thousand. Not only the pressure of the unit, but the maintenance.
No, 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 it's just to press a button on your phone. You just install it on your phone.
But the other one, you buy, and then you got to pay a maintenance fee.
Whatever it is, I guess this person in Maywood felt it was worth it to get their voice heard, and I'll tell you, it raised a lot of eyebrows at the last meeting. Everyone said 1,000, over 1,000 complaints. So just a little, try to add a little humor to a situation that isn't humorous. But as I learn more, of course, I'll keep everyone informed. Just a little bit of a redevelopment update. If you've driven by Main Street and Anderson, you see Home &amp; Moving is down. I mean, that thing came, that building came down and not, didn't take very long at all. Looks like, you know, there was no damage to any of the surrounding area. Our streets were closed for a while, and everything went smoothly. So again, you know, hopefully, they've got a lot of rubble there to clear away when you drive by there, so hopefully, we'll see more progress. And the other big news, Main and Mercer, the crane is up. So if you drive by Main and Mercer, you're going to see a 200-foot crane, which means they're getting ready to go vertical. If you've noticed, there's lots of cement that's been poured, the foundation, they're making a lot of progress with the cement foundation there. I think they're hoping to have at least the foundation elements of the cement poured by mid-February. They're on a schedule, we meet with them regularly, and we're happy to see some real improvement over there. I think once they start to go vertical, that stuff's going to happen quickly. You know, they had a lot of issues with the softness of the soil and the piles and the depth that they had to go to maintain stability, but it looks like they're over that hump, and that's good news for us. The two on the horizon right now are 210 Main Street and 240 Main Street. When you drive by those, you see that, especially 240, you can really tell, because that was a new building. You know, it looks really great from the outside, and you can see the progress. Hard to tell where they are with 210, because they restored the building, so all the work's being done inside. But we've been in contact with both of them, and they're anticipating end of first quarter, so if they say end of first quarter, I'm going to say probably end of second quarter, the way things happen, to be, you know, to be out leasing and obtaining COs, et cetera. So that's great progress and nice for us here in the city. Looking quickly at the docket, one thing I think we're mentioning is there was a resolution on here to change the amount that we're paying for our SLEO, our Class III officers. You know, the city is working together with the Board of Education to hire security officers for the schools, and it's become a very competitive process, and, you know, we had agreed on a dollar figure with the Board of Ed that we would both be happy to support, and we just were having a really tough time in finding officers to work for that. So by increasing it just $5 an hour, we all, Ted, yes, we have a couple in the pipeline right now.
We potentially, if all goes well, we will pick up an additional four SLEO threes, so we would have a sum total of five. Our goal was eight, so just this change has now opened this up. And the director, we spoke about it earlier this morning, said that we think that we're going to get to our goal here, just we needed a little nudge or boost to get where we needed to be.
And that's great news, because, you know, absolutely, that's another one of the collaborative things we've been working on together with the schools. And, you know, our police department is doing all the backup and the research and making sure that we have, you know, the best of the best for our schools, and it's a lengthy process to go through and validate that these folks are the right folks and folks that we want to have working in our system. So that's moving along, and that's a good thing. This weekend, we have a lot going on. Saturday at 2:00 PM, we're having, they're having the grand open of our second brewery in town that's on Johnson Avenue. So, you know, yeah, I see our library director is excited about that. We're excited about it, too. So, you know, if you're around town, stop over there at 2:00 PM and take a visit. I mean, great bunch of young folks over there that, you know, put their, were doing this privately and decided to turn it into a business, and good for them. We wish them all the luck in the world. Also, Saturday evening at the Performing Arts Center here, Amy Helm will be on. That's one of the Pack the House series, so 8 o'clock show. There's only a few tickets left, so if you haven't bought one and you're interested, go online, hackpack.org, and get one of the last few remaining tickets. But it should be a great show, as they all have been. Thanks again to everyone for coming, and stay warm, as Steph said. I mean, I can't believe they're talking about, you know, negative 10s and negative 11s by tomorrow evening. So everyone, you know, please be careful with your pipes, be careful with your pets, and stay inside where it's nice and warm. So have a good night.
Leo?
Well, again, you know, my condolences to all the people that in the last two weeks lost, fathers, relatives, daughters, especially Ms. Whitaker. So my condolences to all these families. Yesterday, I participated in a meeting related to the bridge between Hackensack and Tene. So they're going to go, and they're going to do the stories, and they plan to maybe put a new bridge in that area. So let's wait a couple of weeks by the time they decide how they're going to do it. Let's see if the City of Hackensack can take a stand against the power plant that they tried to build by the Midlands. You know, it's about 34 municipalities. They already stand against that, because to me, there are going to be a lot of pollution to the towns around that area. Hackensack's only like about five miles from the plant. And that particular plant really going to favor New York City, because all the electricity they're going to produce is going to be used for New York City, you know, for Hackensack or the next towns around. DPW has been doing a good job, not only with the little snow that we have, but for instance, the tree department has been taking care of these trees that are close to the electrical line to prevent all the branches to knock cables. And the police department will be all over the city controlling the speed of the different people that really, they're using Fairmont, Euclid, and to try to go really quick to their towns, paramos, and I see a lot of action, normally there are around the schools to prevent the double parking and triple parking and to try to put in danger their own kids. We expect a quick recovery for David Sims, and thank you that now that we got a shooting range in motion. So I expect that maybe in the next couple of weeks, we're going to sign the company that are going to do the remediation for the particular place, and that way finally we can get the facility for the kids. Thank you for coming, and good night.
Okay. Most of the stuff I was going to talk about was mentioned, but I am going to hit on Saturday, obviously, the brewery. It's rare to have one brewery in your municipality. To have two is unheard of. I think there's only one other municipality in the state that has two breweries that are owned like that. This is quite unique. It's going to be a little brewery alley over there, and it's great, because it's going to bring people to Hackensack. A lot of people from all over are going to be coming to this. There are a lot of people, you know, I'm looking at some of the comments where these people are from, and they're from all over the county and other surrounding counties, so they're expecting quite a turnout at this. So if you're going, I would try to get there early, because parking is limited, but it'll be a great grand opening. I'm looking forward to cutting that ribbon with the rest of the council. The Amy Helm Show, Amy Helm, I don't know if anybody who knows, there's not a lot of people in here, but up there on TV land, Amy Helm is daughter of Levon Helms from the group The Band, Grammy Award-winning group. Levon Helms was quite a great drummer and singer, and they were actually the backup band for Bob Dylan when they first started. And she has her own quite unique brand of Americana music. She's very good. She's played with some wonderful, very talented and famous people. And this is the third show of the Pack the House series. There'll be two more left for the Pack the House series, one in March and one in April. And you saw it tonight, we got another street sweeper, well-needed, and that'll help. We promised to build back our fleet in the DPW, and we're doing just that. Again, kudos to Bill White. I've known Bill forever. He wasn't involved just in baseball, he was involved in football as well for years, and he carried the torch for many, many years, and it takes a lot of dedication to run these programs. These are volunteers, they don't get a dime. And, you know, to me, youth sports is the best form of crime prevention you could have. Keeps the kids off the streets, it gives them a place to play, a place to be, interact with other children, to learn. And in some cases, these coaches, they volunteer their time, or, you know, could be the father figure or mother figure that this child might need, so they fill a special role in children's needs, and that's very important. And I'm proud to say I spent over twenty years coaching in this town, and I don't regret a minute of it, I loved every minute of it. We're having a major issue all over the city with pedestrian safety. It's partially the fault of drivers, and it's partially the fault of pedestrians. All too many times, I see people jaywalking, crossing where they shouldn't be walking, they don't go to the crosswalk, and when you do that, you do take your life at risk, and it's, you are not protected by law if you get hit by a car in the middle of a block, not in a crosswalk, just so you know that. So that's why the crosswalks are there. That said, when somebody is in a crosswalk, you best be prepared to stop for them, because if you don't, you're in trouble, because that person is very well-protected within the crosswalk, and it's going to cost you dearly. And plus, it's, you know, unfortunately, very unsafe for the pedestrian. Weather was brought up, code blue is in effect, will be in effect. You know, check on neighbors, friends, seniors that might need your help. There's numbers to call, you can call the city, and we'll help you out with that if you call any of our organizations here in the city. So it's an early night tonight, so everybody have a safe trip home, and we'll see you in about two weeks. All right? Thank you.
Motion to close?
Need a motion to close the meeting? Motion to close.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.